Evening, everybody. Let me call to order the special reading of the City Council this Tuesday, December 13, 2022. To attend this meeting virtually via Zoom, please go on to HTTPS bit.ly/dailycity, December 13. Or to watch this via live telecast, you can go on YouTube at Daily City Video Meetings or Comcast Channel 27, or on the web at www.dailycity.org/Agendas. All right, let me call this meeting to order. Could you all please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Ben Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Present.
Thank you very much. Can we get an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 28, 2020?
Motion to approve.
Motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any objection? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Public appearances, oral communications. This portion of public agenda is available for the public to address the City Council on any issue that is not on the agenda. In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the City Council is not authorized to speak or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public, joining in person who submitted a speaker card may come up to the podium one at a time when their name is called. Members of the public, joined by Zoom, may click the raise hand feature to request to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and six to unmute. When you hear your name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone. Let me turn it over to, well, let me ask, is there any public comment in person? Seeing none, let me turn it over to Ms. Ramos for our Zoom public comments.
I see one hand raised.
Go ahead.
We have a user by phone. Please press star six to unmute.
So, my name is the public, and since you guys are public servants, you're here to serve, right? So, that's good news, right? So, good news first, Ms. Leilani Ramos, you can stand. Please be recognized. You are the Daily City Employee of the Year. We, the public community and people, award you this because of your professionalism, your ability to get to, and from the community. City Attorney, we award you a Purple Heart. Very simply, you've had to endure so much nonsense, especially from Rod. He obviously does not know the procedure, the policies, really the procedure of the council. And then the next one is really understanding City Council itself. So, in order to be a member of City Council, one just needs to be an 18-year-old individual, a registered voter, and simply somebody in college can do this. Now, about last night, so on your feet, Gray, sewer rat, so you, Manalo, and Rod are the problems here. You're the problems with this community, with this council. You've caused so many problems since the September 26, 22 hearing, rambling on about the assault that never occurred. You are a piece of trash. You're garbage. You need to leave. All three of you need to leave. We can either recall you, or you can simply leave. Your mothers look down upon you and say, what did I do? Why did I bring these people in this world? I destroyed the world. You know, you're displays of racism, you're displays of antagonism, and simply your inability to work with other people. You got it from Tampa, no doubt. Rod's a racist, Rod calling people out, Rod calling a woman out by the color of her skin. Why don't you call one of us men out? Why don't you, why don't you hand up, dude? You're nothing, you're vile, you're filth, you're garbage. So, an open invitation from the community, the public, and the people, to all of you, one-on-one, five-on-one, whatever, we're going to be able to meet with you guys anytime you respond.
All right, does that conclude public comment?
That concludes public comment.
All right, thank you. Let me go on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any council members wish to pull? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Let me go on to public hearings, public hearing number six. We amend the citywide fee schedule for the annual fire inspection fee. Mr. Nevin?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, staff recommends that the council amend the citywide fee schedule and adjust the annual fire inspection fee. On July 11, 2022, the City Council approved citywide fee adjustments. Since that time, fire staff have reviewed the fees for annual fire inspections as well as new occupancy business inspections, and determined that the level of effort for each type of inspection is the same. Therefore, staff recommends that the annual fire inspection fee be decreased from $630 per inspection to $419 to align with the new occupancy business inspection fee. The recommended action will decrease revenue by $211 per inspection. Staff recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing and adjust the annual fire inspection fee, and staff is available to provide. Any additional information desired by the mayor or council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Nevin. Any questions from the council?
Yes, Mayor, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Nevin. Thank you very much for all the information. I do have a question. I remember when even the fire inspectors at some point, this is maybe a few years ago, they were discussing about like, because people in the community were addressing them, like Home Depot, a big corporation, large square feet, gets charged the same as a small business? Is that, is that like the 419?
That is correct. It's a flat fee that's for each inspection. But in the past, you're correct, it has been discussed whether to use some other type of mechanism other than just staff time, including the square footage of a facility.
Correct.
And it was determined that staff time would be the measurement for what the fee, what fee would be charged.
Okay. Because in some ways, as smaller business owners, I don't think, I'm not sure if they would, it would be resounding out in the public that it would be a fair and equitable, since they're the ones that are upset as well of having Home Depot, I'm not blaming Home Depot, I'm just using it as an example, as a large square corporation and that can afford more, to figure out some other equitable way, and then we still have recovery, not making them necessarily pay for that part. But I don't, in my view, I don't see that as equitable. I feel equitable is the number straight across, but I don't see it as our small businesses paying the same as corporate. But I do know some small businesses, do we entertain the idea, was there any outreach to find out exactly how the businesses feel about this, or any other suggestions they have? Because maybe some small businesses are larger in square feet, maybe automotive, maybe large in square feet, but they might be a small business compared to a Home Depot. Is there any other equitable scale that we could look at or measure it? And just in general? I mean, I don't know if my colleagues have any suggestions, but in my view, the small businesses paying the same as Home Depot, again, corporations, is, I don't know if the, we might still be getting the people calling, and it may not be something that will be well-received in our community.
I can say again that the, how the fee is calculated has been discussed in the past, and the decision has been made to assess the fee based on the amount of time spent by a city employee, and then calculating what that means in terms of the cost for providing that service to the community.
Okay. I just wanted to open it up to my colleagues and see if they have any.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to commend Councilmember D. Giovanni, because I know where she's going. But the issue we have tonight is the decrease in fees, and I think that's a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
I also understand the point that it's cost recovery, and Mr. Nevin, you have made mention, it's the staff time that it's taken. So, I'm gonna just throw a number out of the hat, say it takes an hour. That same amount of time for travel and leaving, and if it's a minimum of one hour, then that would apply to whether it's a small business or a large business. If staff can get inspection done based upon, well, square footage doesn't seem to really be an issue, probably be exits and looking for fire extinguishers and make sure that they have them. But I think it's the same as whether it's a small business or a large business. We're probably asking is to find some way, just because a corporation happens to be a big business, that they help subsidize the small business, and I don't think that's a proper way to go down. I think what we're doing, we're reducing the permit inspection fee, and also, the main idea is cost recovery. Mr. Nevin, you've made mention, it's staff time to go out there and complete the job.
Yeah, I'm not asking.
Just my comment. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not asking the large business to subsidize the small businesses. I was just trying to say that this is what I hear from the small businesses. So, that's, that's all I'm just trying to say. I'm not asking the large business to subsidize, but thank you.
Ms. Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, Director Nevin, thank you so much for your due diligence and your analysis on the fees. I think what you have at hand, that the decrease is actually in regards to kind of staff time, as mentioned earlier, then that means that we are assessing our fees, and I think that's something administration should do over time, and you're doing that. And I don't know when the last time this was done, so thank you for your work on that. I think whether they're a resident, small business, or large business, it's showing that the City of Daly City is actually ensuring that the costs that we are, you know, asking these individual residents or businesses is actually allocated to staff time. I mean, I heard the comment around other businesses. I think one idea I would bring forth is, well, what are other jurisdictions doing? You know, I hear the rationale, and really, it's around staff time, but are there other jurisdictions in the area? And I would say just maybe look at the county. I don't expect you to look all over the Bay Area, but I think seeing that comparison would be helpful. But I appreciate it. I think that's, that's good for people to hear, especially during this time. I know some people are struggling. We see a recession on the horizon, and so even the little bit of that's mentioned that in regards to the cost decreasing is helpful. So, thank you so much for that, yeah.
Mayor, do you have any questions?
No.
Any other question? Go ahead, Ms. D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to make mention, yes, the reduction is a start, because I know that we received several complaints. The city manager was saying about the fee itself, and I believe with expense, Tom?
We did have a, Chair?
Yes.
We did have a couple of initial calls.
About the cost.
It's been looked at and brought back to you.
Yeah. Okay. So, that's a start, like you said, and then maybe moving forward, we can look at different other angles, and like was mentioned, whether jurisdictions. But it is a struggle for everybody. But thank you, thank you, and please thank the staff. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Hearing none, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments? Hearing no public comments, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any objection? Hearing none, the hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt ordinance.
A second?
Ben Sylvester, second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Ben Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye. That ordinance passes. Item number seven, public hearing on community development and housing needs. Ms. Lenell. Good evening, Lenell.
Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. I haven't done this in two, three years. Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The recommended action before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing to identify and prioritize community development and housing priorities for the city's five-year HUD consolidated plan for FY 23, 24 through FY 27, 28, and then to authorize the solicitation of requests for proposals for the FY 23, 24 Community Development Block Grant Funds. Okay, so the city receives CDVG and home funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. CDVG funds are used to meet housing and community development needs that primarily benefit low-income residents, and home is used to expand the supply of decent, safe, and affordable housing for lower-income households. So, in order to use these CDVG and home funds, the city is required to prepare a five-year HUD consolidated plan. Currently, we're in the last year of our previous five-year HUD consolidated plan, so the upcoming HUD consolidated plan will cover the period beginning July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2028. And the plan will consist of a needs assessment, an analysis of community development and housing needs, and a strategic plan on how to address those needs. The areas covered in the consolidated plan revolve around housing, capital improvements, economic development, and public services. Just to give you an example of these different categories, housing would be like the housing rehab program or housing counseling. For capital improvements, it would be the sidewalk curb ramps that we've installed, and we've also used CDVG funds to repay a loan to build the Bay Shore Community Center. For economic development, we've used CDVG funds to fund a nonprofit that provides micro enterprise assistance and technical assistance. And public services is a broader category, which can be used to help fund legal aid as well as services for youth and seniors, and operations of homeless shelters. Just to note, public services, there's a cap of 15% of your CDVG allocation annually can go towards public services. And not included in that above is a 20% set aside for program administration. So, a big component of preparing the five-year HUD consolidated plan is community participation. So, typically, every year, we have two public hearings, one in December for the needs hearing, and then another in April where we review the action plan. But this being the start of the five-year HUD consolidated plan for the next period, we do a little bit more. So, we have collaborated with the other jurisdictions in San Mateo County that also receive HUD funds, in contracting with a consultant to help us prepare a residential and stakeholder survey, as well as doing consultations with various community agencies, since we tend to fund regional agencies that serve not just Daly City, but Redwood City, South City, and the county. So, the survey, I just wanted to put this up there, is available online. There's the link, and then as well as the QR code. The survey was made available in November, and it will be open until January 15. So, so far, we've had 76 respondents from Daly City, and we welcome definitely more respondents, so there's the survey information. Preliminary findings that we've received so far, so in terms of housing, there is a need for rental housing for low-income renters, and homeownership opportunities for low-mod residents. In terms of desired community development outcomes, and again, this is coming from the survey respondents so far. So, in terms of community development outcomes, there's a desire for additional and/or higher-quality childcare centers, increased access to mental health services, and more recreation opportunities for young and other special populations. In terms of economic development, there's a desire for revitalization of neighborhood businesses and commercial areas. And again, that's just preliminary findings of what we have. So, once we prepare the consolidated plan, then each year within the consolidated plan, there's a one-year action plan. So, the action plan implements the five-year consolidated plan. So, the action plan allocates the CDVG and home funds we will receive for that year. So, for example, in FY 23, 24, we will be getting an allocation of CDVG funds and home funds. We don't know how much we will be getting yet. Typically, we get this information around February, but just as a guidepost, last year in, well, in this current year, we are getting about $1 million in CDVG funds and getting about $400,000, or $394.19, in home funds. So, after the public hearing, staff recommends that the council approve the solicitation of the RFP for next year's CDVG funding for 23, 24. So, this public hearing was noticed, it was a 30-day notice in the paper, and it was also posted on social media and the website, as well as libraries. And the survey I mentioned earlier was also made available on social media, the city's website, and information posted at the libraries. Do you have any questions at this point?
Any questions? Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, excellent job. It's great that we have participation, and then to let people know that, you know, that you still need the input, but it's excellent job. It really tells us what we need, and that's what I look forward to. So, you guys always focus for that, you and Betsy, and I just hope we can do more, right? But I appreciate all the hard work. I know it takes a lot. Cares for our community. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Lenell, thank you for your report. I'm very familiar with CDVG funds, and it encompasses different areas, to include COVID and excessive.
Yes, yes.
A million dollars seems like a lot, but it's not enough.
Right.
And, you know, to have to go and try to accommodate the community needs in the various areas. However, I just wanted to bring up two programs, and if you can advise if we look in those areas, we're talking about housing, so do we provide any subsidies whatsoever, even if it's a temporary subsidy, for Section 8 housing through CDVG?
In terms of COVID, we provided emergency rental assistance using CDVG funds. There were some waivers made to make the use of those funds easier. Without those waivers, we may have to do housing inspections, and it's just harder to use those funds for that without the waivers.
Okay. Well, Section 8 is a program that's available through HUD.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if there are any funds that can be diverted or put aside for Section 8 waivers?
Section 8 is administered by the county, the public, the Housing Authority of San Mateo County, and not by the city.
All right, thank you. The other question is, I understand that we also provide rehabilitation loans for folks who are already in their homes, and they need rehabilitation, either to put in a disabled ramp, or to fix code enforcement violations. Do we provide any services for rehabilitation loans through CDVG?
Yes, we, the city has a residential rehab program, and this program is available to low-income residents, meaning the 80% area median income, and we provide a complete rehab loan, painting-only loan, I think senior grant loans of about, I think, is it $2,500 or $2,000? I'm not positive.
Excellent. Oh, I just wanted to bring that point up, because from the 30,000-foot level I see here, there are many other aspects within CDVG, and I just learned about the painting the house thing. That's pretty good. All right, well, thank you very much for your report.
But there's also roof-only loan, I think I forgot to mention that, yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
Ms. Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lenell, I just want to say excellent presentation. I know, year after year, how you work on these programs to ensure that the needs of our communities are met, and it's pretty comprehensive, from ensuring that families remain in their homes, to economic development, and really, you know, at one point, I think we also asked for dollars to support mental health needs of our community, especially through COVID times. And so, it's just amazing work. I think that as we look towards the next consolidated kind of outlook around the needs of our community, I'd like to know if there's ways to engage people so that, I mean, we obviously get these dollars in five-year blocks, and so the opportunity to garner feedback is really important. And I know you all do an excellent job. What are the ways that we do? I heard you said social media, newspapers, to reach out to our communities. Do we also reach out to our school districts, given that our, you know, the families and individuals, you know, those are really the residents as well that we serve?
Yes, we actually emailed the school superintendent about the survey. Yes, we actually emailed the school superintendent about the survey, and we will also email them about the RFP. Before I forget, I forgot to mention that we did receive a correspondence from Peninsula Family Services. Can I give you the letters now?
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Manalo.
Okay, I just want to highlight that the letter states that according to the San Mateo County 2022 Childcare Needs Assessment, only 19% of Daly City's demand for infant care is being met by existing providers. For the high-quality, full-day subsidized spaces that Peninsula Family Service provides, there is unmet need of 878 children in need of subsidized spaces. So I just wanted to provide that. That was one of the input we received.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick comment. Manalo, thank you for the report. Can you put up that slide with the QR code? And we're still taking more respondents, correct?
Yes.
Until January?
Yes, the survey, yeah, we are taking responses until July fif, no, January 15th, 2023.
Okay. And then, okay, thank you. And you said there's only 77 respondents as of now?
Seventy-six so far. They thought that there was initially more, but then when they looked at it more closely, there were bots. So they're still trying to.
Okay. So those were just paper surveys? Or were they?
I think it might be a mixture.
Okay.
Yeah, paper surveys are available, but they're also online.
All right. Okay, I'll help promote this survey because I think 77 is a pretty low number, especially for funding that that needs input and feedback. But that, those are my comments. Thank you, Manalo.
Also, Councilmember Manalo, you had mentioned five-year block for CDBG funds. The allocation is actually annually, so we have to plan for five years, but the amount that we get is determined annually.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any public comment? Yes, go ahead.
We have one hand raised virtually. User by phone, please press star six to unmute.
So this is a public hearing, right? And this is a public hearing about this matter, right? This agenda item? So I just want to make sure I understand this. In a town of about 107,000, there's been about 77 responses, or 76 responses. Is that a good number? I mean, don't we start counting at 1%? I don't know. Is there any other ways that you guys reach out to community? Or are you entirely socially inept, socially retarded? Because I'm just, I'm just wondering why community is not involved in such a matter. Community facilities are important. It's critical, it's vital, and having one public comment ought to speak on this matter is rather dismal. So I think you guys really need to understand how to reach community, how to interact with the community, because it's not really happening, and it's not really working. I have great ideas personally, and actually, the team has great ideas, but we need to remove three individuals from council so that they don't write on our coattails. We would be happy to share those with Mr. Sylvester and Pam, but we need to get those three off, and then we could share our ideas and maybe make this community better, huh? Sound good?
That concludes public comment.
All right. At this time, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Objection. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second?
Can I get a roll call, please?
That, Mr. Sylvester?
Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. Resolution passes. Let me go on to item number eight under Communications, which is the authorized agreement for Sacred Heart Cathedral Prepory for the Improvements and Use of Marsh Bank Park. Mr. Piccolati?
Yes, sir, thank you. Honorable Mayor Buena Ventura, Vice Mayor Manalo, council members. Recommended action tonight is authorize the interim city manager to enter into an agreement with Sacred Heart Cathedral Prepory for improvements and use at Marsh Bank Park, which is located at 10 South Parkview Avenue, Daly City. Some background, early in August, just short after my appointment, I was, I met with Sacred Heart Cathedral Prep team to discuss a potential joint enhancement project at Marsh Bank. The team from Sacred Heart Cathedral consisted of Chancellor Dr. Melinda Scready and Athletic Director Phil Freed. They are here tonight. We discussed a possible joint revitalization project at the park, and it was agreed that staff and Sacred Heart would present to council. At the September 12th meeting, staff and Sacred Heart made the presentation to council for the project for usage of the field. Through the project, Sacred Heart would fund numerous enhancements to the park consistent with Daly City's parks' master plan. Sacred Heart would seek an agreement to use the field for certain times and days along with the rental fee. City Council provided direction at that September meeting for staff to continue working with Sacred Heart Cathedral Prep on this subject and bring it back to council for approval. And Dr. Scready and her team are here tonight, and they will make a presentation at this time. So, Dr. Scready?
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Melinda Lawler Scready, and I serve Sacred Heart Cathedral as its president. This is my fifth year.
Why don't you come?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Tonight, Phil Freed, the athletic director, and I, mayor, vice mayor, honorable council members, Dr. Rod. I want to especially thank Tom Piccolati for inviting us to come and meet with him in the early fall and discuss a need that we are very, very much attuned to. Fifteen years ago, we put together a task force to look at the communities around us where our students come from in Daly City as a feeder school community to Sacred Heart Cathedral. And since then, we have hoped for and prayed for the opportunity to have a community area park that we could enhance, that we could participate in, and that we could be a major contributor to in terms of the community richness and embedded connectedness of what we call the Daly City constituents and our stakeholders. And so today, I'm here on our 170th year. The daughters came to the city answering a call for the help of the abandoned babies in the city in 1852, two years before the inception of San Francisco. And they have remained since in the tender line in the mission. And they were joined in 1874 by the Christian Brothers. And it's ever since then, those of us that have called ourselves servants to this incredible mission have remained committed that it is the youth today that are going to be our leaders tomorrow, and that we have, those of us who call ourselves servant leaders, we have an incumbent duty to serve that need, not just for today, but for all time. And so today, I invite our athletic director, wonderful colleague, and a very proud graduate of the school to present the project to you visually, and we would take any more questions. Very grateful that we were able to present originally on Zoom, but it is just so, it just really is so moving to be here in person and to be able to present to you. Mr. Phil Freed?
Thank you, Dr. Scready. So I've been at Sacred Heart Cathedral now for 33 years, and as a student there, one of the biggest, as well as an employee, one of the biggest challenges we've had with our outdoor sports programs is facilities. We are downtown San Francisco, heart of the city, and so land is somewhat limited. We've been working with a number of municipalities around the country, I mean, the county and the area, Daly City, San Francisco, obviously, South San Francisco. We've also worked with some of the universities just to try to partner up as best we can to not only promote their facilities, but also to give our student athletes good places to play and practice games over the course of a given school year. So three years ago, for those of you who are here, you remember that we came to you at that point in time to present to you a proposal to upgrade Westlake Park. And so if we could just advance this next slide and keep going there, if you would. So JP Lang Field is just an example of what we've done here in San Francisco. About four years ago, we entered into a relationship with the city. They were looking to do a renovation. If you just could advance the slide of this field right here, which is literally a block away from our school, and they already had it on the agenda to renovate this. However, they were falling short of the necessary funds in order to finish a project specifically to put in synthetic turf. So they approached us, given our proximity to them, and said, Sacred Heart Cathedral, are you interested in entering into an agreement with San Francisco to help us complete this project in a way that it enhances it not only for you, but for the surrounding community? We said yes. As a result, we entered into an MOU with them, which gave us some usefulness of the field. We also entered into permitting rights with them as well. And to this day, if you just advance the next slide, that's what it looks like. And so our kids walk down the hill, we're up here to the, to the north of what the field is, and so they walk down there in the morning for PE, they go down there for intermurals, they go down there for practices and games after school. One thing, and I was down there this morning at 7:45 for a PE class. It was frozen. It was beautiful, actually. But what, you know, dawned on me when I was down there today was that there was a lot of community members who were using the facility for exercise on their own. If you go back to the last slide just real quickly, when it was in this state, it was just like Marsh Bank right now. When it was in the state, Lang Field was literally blocking key until the afternoon because it was a field that, you know, if they left it open, probably was going to get abused and misused and, and torn up to a point where the games couldn't happen after school. So when they did it in the current state, as you might be able to see, it's, it's literally open 24/7. They do have some gates there, they close late at night, but for the most part, it is an open facility, which means that community members can come down throughout the course of a day and use it, you know, for recreational uses, whether they're a student athlete or just, you know, grandparents or someone bringing their kids down there. So it does give the ability to really enhance the community use. So what we're looking to do, if you go to the next slide, is this is what we did at Westlake Park back in 2019. It's been great for us, and I think it's been great for other users as well here in the city of Daly City. We reconfigured the north diamond down there to make it be used and playable for high school baseball, and we put up some fencing along the right field line. If you go to the next slide, please, you can see right there in this photo, that protects anything going on on tennis courts, as well as the park down the right field line there, just so that when baseball's being played out there, you know, balls are not flying into the tennis courts and into the playground. So going forward now to Marsh Bank, our goal is with this field and what our proposal is here before you tonight, enhance the safety of it for the players and the spectators, enhance the experience of going to Marsh Bank, as well as just increase the usage of the field and make it operationally efficient. And so we're here to present to you our proposed improvements. And I'm kind of just go through these, and you can see that's pretty comprehensive. We're looking at every aspect of the facility at Marsh Bank. The security, improving access to the parking down the right field line there into the parking garage there. It's not ADA compliant at this point in time, so obviously we're looking to improve that area, just to improve the overall security of the facility, as well as transition to its aesthetic turf, which then allows it to be more usable over any given time or day. In addition, the backstop, the fencing, the scoreboard that's out there in centerfield, just netting in and around the field, down the foul pole lines, all these things are things that we would address with this proposal. Moving forward, if you go into behind the backstop there, there's that bathroom area, little storage area and a snack bar area. We would enhance that whole area right there, bring it up to a more effective use of that space, add sound system, upgrade technology, just make it a more welcoming space than it is at this current time. And then the dugouts, the bullpens, the bleacher area up there, you can see the concrete bleachers. We would make them safer, much more desirable to, to, and useful in terms of watching and viewing any of the games that are going on down on the field. And then if you go to the outfield, this is looking at the batting cages that are out there beyond the centerfield fence, we would just do a renovation of that whole space there. It's kind of antiquated and old at this point in time, so it just needs a refresher there, new netting, new flooring, things along those lines. And then the storage areas, outfield area, we probably would get out of there and use dugout space or spaces behind the dugout for storage areas. So the partnership that we're looking between Daly City and Sacred Heart Cathedral, increased revenue, use of the field, Daly City, Sacred Heart Cathedral, community partnership to provide sports clinics and camps, one of the things we have in our proposal. You know, at the time, we have a lot of camps at Sacred Heart Cathedral. We will be looking to try to partner with the city of Daly City to bring those to Marsh Bank, whether it's for lacrosse, softball, baseball, you name it, we would be there willing and wanting to be able to do that because we do that currently right now down at Lang Field during the summertime. New improved community venue in addition to the baseball area, Marsh Bank Field, the upper area, which had the basketball courts, the playground, the barbecue area, those are things we know in your master plan, you have those things earmarked for improvements. And so we're here not to mandate what to do, but we're here to help you. Verdi Design, who we have employed over the last year and a half, has a good job in helping us get to where we are today. And if you could just go to the next slide, and I'll show you in a couple minutes what they have done for us. But here's the terms of agreement that we're proposing tonight. Sacred Heart Cathedral released Marsh Bank for an average of 20 hours a week during the school year, which runs roughly from August to May, for at least term of 15 years. We would collaborate with Daly City to offer winter clinics in addition to sports camps, summer sports camps that I alluded to. We would pay for all the construction costs of all the things that I told you we were going to do to improve Marsh Bank. And then in addition to all of that, we would pay to the city of Daly City to use as a seat necessary, $1,000, the rental fees for the length of the agreement. So if you go to the next slide, this is kind of a rendering by Verdi Design of what things could look like. If you see there, there's, it's a multipurpose field to get lined there for soccer, you've got the cutout for softball and for baseball, those little white tick lines there that you see that look like little Ts, those are the yard markers for football. So if you wanted to play football out there and line the field to play football, you already have the lines already in place. You would just have to actually go and put in, spray down lines there, which, so you don't, the reason being that we don't put in permanent lines for all the sports is because then the field becomes very busy looking, and it really is not an effective use of lines. Behind home plate there, you can see some of the modifications that we're making, where there is elevated concourse, you have a meeting space, you have concession areas, you have an announcing area. So we just, that whole backstop area behind home plate is really renovated and updated so that that space could be used a little bit more effectively and efficiently. So this is our first rendering that we have with Mart, with the Verdi Design. If this proposal is passed, obviously, we would be working very closely with Verdi Design to update this, and then obviously look into getting, hiring a contractor to do the actual work. And I think that brings us to the end here. This is kind of the upper playground area, just kind of showing you some of the things that may be done or that we've talked about. And there's one more slide here. So, you know, these are just areas that we Um, so you know, these are just areas that we know are important to the community. We know they're in your master plan. So when we were just looking at this whole space, we felt that, uh, as a good part, we needed to involve what things could be done from our perspective to that upper space as you look to, um, carry out your master plan. So I think that might be it. Are there any questions that anyone might have about any and all of this?
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions? Ms. Manala, go ahead.
Thank you very much for your presentation. This is really exciting to see. As mentioned before, this is the neighborhood I grew up in. I'm no longer in that neighborhood, but walked to Jefferson High School through March Bank's park. Um, and really you said the word, it's antiquated. It's similar to what I've seen when, I won't say my age, but many, many, many moons ago. Um, and so, um, seeing, you know, the improvements and also the football, soccer and baseball opportunities on there, um, is really exciting to see. Um, I think that, um, also the opportunities to also renovate the upper level where there's children play, um, barbecue area. I mean, I think that, a walking path.
For our older community members who are there.
Yeah, no, you bring a, a great point. So a lot of people that are, uh, they actually walk around that, that asphalt area. And I mean, if there is any way to just have kind of a real, uh, texture to it, but they, they do, they literally walk around. Um, they kind of make it, you know, their, their walk for the day. I've, I've noticed that when I have brought my son over there, um, after seeing grandma. And so I think that, um, this is a, a wonderful proposal. The one question I have, um, you did mention offer Daly City youth opportunities, um, to attend sports and clinics. Um, I wanted to understand a little bit more clearly what that would entail.
So, um.
Phil Serves, Mr. Freed is also the summer school principal. And so he runs a third semester for the school every year and all of the coursework and all of the camps. And that's a beautiful service that he gives the school. Um, and we offer, I, I think something like seventy-five different programs during that period of time.
Yeah, so the summer, so we have winter clinics that are currently going on right now. They usually go on during the weekends and sometimes at night, um, in a variety of sports. And then our big offering to the grammar school kids is the summer camps. And so, um, we do have some scholarships that are available for those who, who can't pay the fees, um, for the summer camps and our clinics. So, you know, this is something that obviously we would have to work with Daly City to, to somehow, you know, get data lists and things like that. If people might be interested or at least get the word out that this is a possibility, you know, especially if we're, you know, like in someone's backyard and they want to learn how to play lacrosse or, you know, a soccer camp or, or a football clinic or softball or baseball, whatever it is. Um, and it's just, it's a great way to give opportunities to the youth of Daly City. And I'll be quite frank, it's a great way for them to find out who we are. And maybe one day they become a student at Sacred Heart Cathedral, who knows? But it's just a way that we know that, you know, when we enter into these types of relationships, it's gotta be one win. And, and one way that we feel that we can give something to Daly City is by offering them a variety of opportunities at these camps and our clinics.
If I may add, Vice Mayor, this is a case of needs. So we have a lot of discussions about needs and wants in a school that has to raise every dollar. And we have to be very careful about not dreaming too big. And this need has gone on for about fifteen years. And when we learned about the need, we learned about it from Joseph, the previous, um, individual who handled all the fields. We were standing on March Bank Field about four years ago, uh, twenty nineteen in the fall. And he said, boy, it would be great if somebody would invest in this field. And so we said, is it available? And he said, no, it's not available, but it's something to dream about. And I thought, at that moment, I thought, maybe we can make this aspirational and meet the needs of the community for both sides in a public-private partnership. And that began, uh, Phil Freed is the individual who helped manage the relationship with the city of San Francisco in a way that was a win for all of the needs of both sides in the tenderloin on the edge of the mission. It's just an extraordinary experience to see people so edified and elevated by seeing a big, green, beautiful, um, field that they can use. So we share it with other schools, we share it with the public. We're hoping to have the same kind of, um, deep connectedness in this community. We have a hundred families that attend Sacred Heart Cathedral, eighty-eight this year, and then we have our applicant pool that's coming in. So we feel that it would be well received and we hope to participate as sponsors as needed in the community events that happen at the field.
Thank you for, um, clarifying that, um, in regards to, I mean, I have passed by the field in San Francisco, um, and have seen kind of how the change, the change that has brought forth. And so, um, given the opportunity to many residents and families to have an enhanced field right in, uh, their area is really important. Uh, but I also hear from you that the opportunity for scholarships for young people, um, may be available. And I look forward to seeing that partnership with the city of Daly City and implementing how that can get the word out. So especially those that are, um, right around the vicinity or, um, those, uh, that don't even have the opportunity to, um, participate in those type of recreational and sport, sportmanship, like, um, sport endeavors, right? Like, um, how will these young people be able to know? Maybe that's something that they'll enjoy and maybe something that, um, will, um, you know, be something that they bring for, forward with them in their collegiate endeavors, right? Maybe somewhat through, um, baseball or whatnot. But I just asked that question because I just wanted to know what, how that would look, um, further down the line. Um, that's my, um, public administration MPA hat around, okay, like, how do we see that down, down, down the line? And I think this is, um, such a unique opportunity for the city of Daly City. Um, private-public partnerships are really a way, I mean, we all, I mean, know right now as far as like the budgets that we have, um, are really limited. And to have an organization like yourself partner with the city of Daly City, I think that there is a win-win here, um, for the residents and also for the city of Daly City. And, um, thank you for your proposal. I'm really excited to see this here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manala. Dr. Rod?
Yes, um, I just have a couple of comments. Thank you for the in-depth, um, presentation and the packet. Um, I guess I have, um, which sports will be played specifically? Is it soccer, baseball?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So, um, for us, it would, just if you go from the beginning of the school year to the end. So, um, it would be used for, uh, football practice. Um, it would be used in the winter for soccer practices and or games. Um, and then in the spring, which would be our biggest use out there, would range from baseball, softball and boys and girls lacrosse.
You said lacrosse?
Yeah, boys and girls lacrosse.
It's a very popular sport.
Yeah, it's growing.
I believe it.
More so than baseball or softball.
Yeah.
So that's kind of, yeah, I mean, those are the ones that's, you know, at this point in time that we foresee using it in, in various capacities.
And then, uh, maybe for the staff, um, how much time does Park and Rec use March Bank, March Bank Park on the rec? Do you all know?
Speaking to recreation staff, it's, um, full use right now, uh, by baseball only.
Gotcha.
But during the times that you can play baseball, there are several groups, independent groups that are, um, utilizing it.
Thank you, Tom. Um, another one would be, um, signage. So, uh, what would it look like if I had to walk in here? Does it, would it say like Daly City March Bank Park, sponsored by?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, we're not, I don't think, we're not, we're not looking to have it anything other than what it currently is in terms of its title.
The Daughters of Charity and the Brothers, uh, kind of forbid that.
Got it.
That it's, um, not for us to let the sunshine out from under our basket, so to speak.
And then, um, I also wanted to ask a question about how regular are synthetic fields being used nowadays?
Um, great question. You know, it's funny because there's, there's both sides to it, the pros and the cons. Um, I would say in the WSAO, which we currently compete, um, we have, there's eight schools. I would say, uh, for most fields, I'd say seven out of those eight schools, whether they're baseball fields, football fields, soccer fields are synthetic turf. Um, you know, Jefferson, as you know, right down the street is synthetic turf. So it's, it's something that, and I know there's people who say that it increases injury, there's more injuries. And, and I don't think there's any factual data to substantiate that. Um, but it is something that's discussed. And, and so we've had synthetic turf, um, at Sacred Heart Cathedral, but we do have a small practice field. We've had it since nineteen ninety-nine, so we've been through, um, three fields there. And, um, I haven't had any, you know, gross number of injuries as a result of, of having synthetic fields on our campus.
If I may add, the state of California's drought declaration really kind of took that risk mitigation about water, it just took it off our conversation entirely. We were talking a lot about that early on. And I believe that we were very, you know, really blessed to have rain again. Uh, but we fully expect that we would not be doing sixty-nine thousand gallons a week for just the baseball field. That's just seems somewhat irresponsible and we might be called out for it. And, um, we, we also answer to others about it.
Well, you answered all my questions about that. Um, thank you.
Dr. Rod, any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. DeJure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, good evening. Thank you for being here. I do have a few. I remember the, uh, Mr. Piccolotti mentioned that currently the baseball, we have different baseball groups that use the field. Will they have to change their schedule or will they be able to keep the schedules that they currently have?
You're asking me?
Yeah, or them.
Yeah, um, I spoke to. Spoke to the recreation director about this and the field by the individual groups is mainly reserved and it isn't quite used all the time. But we would be able to schedule and program in Sacred Heart and the other groups. We discussed that.
So we haven't had enough time.
Yeah, there, there's enough time in a day to, to have the, the field shared.
Thank you. And I know that you guys have a big history of, um, coming in and, like you said, creating, you showed the example of that. So would you do that and you do your construction, do you use signatory contractors that use labor?
Yes, we, we are bound by our very entity, who we are.
Yeah.
Bound to using the labor.
Union labor, that's what I thought. Cause I read through a lot of your back papers and you guys do have a good history of using, and I want to commend you on that, by the way.
Appreciate that. We're a school of firefighters and officers, nurses and teachers.
And you, cause I saw that you also use, I think, the IBW for the, all the unions, even our carpenters.
Unionized. We are the only, San Francisco's Catholic schools are the only union, public union in the nation.
Right, compared to other religious schools, right? Correct. I just want to clarify all that for the public, because I've had a lot of people ask me so. That's part of my job. And, um, so thank you and appreciate that. And it creates a lot of local jobs as well. So, cause I know that IBW has a history of replacing the scoreboard every year. And maybe you could even offer to them, because they like to have some kind of play in it, I'm not sure.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, but thank you for the union and, um, supports, let's see. The other question was, um, given the outreach in this, uh, project, what type of outreach was there to see what the community needed, what we need?
Yes, ma'am. We started fifteen years ago and then more recently when we were looking at Westlake Field.
Yeah.
Um, mostly to figure out if it was a good partnership for us in terms of a public-private. It really needed to meet the needs of the community in which we participate. And Daly City was top of the list. So, um, the demographics of the community.
Yeah.
Pretty much match the demographics of the school. And that was really appealing to me. That's part of our mission. Um, and that, that is the outreach. Um, other than the council, we have not, we've tried to dis, I'll speak for myself, discipline myself, not to do any campaigning on this issue.
Yeah, I understand that.
That we brought it here first and that we deal first together with each other.
Did you have any conversations with any other electives other than us? Probably not. That's just us, right?
No, um, but I do have a one additional one is I know, um, Amani Stewart, who is, um, in charge of DC Stars. Um, Amani and I, Amani used to coach at Sacred Heart Cathedral for a couple of seasons and so.
Is that Imani?
Amani, yes. And so, you know, so I know he has that program and they use Westmore Lots and I don't know if they use Jefferson as well. Um, and I'm sure they use Geller, but this, I think, another, um, site that they would welcome and they would use.
I think that's a big star for some of us of this council because he's a great community member and he's created a lot of opportunities for some students. As we all know, we know his heart and the work he does and that they often get their scholarships. You're familiar with Imani?
Yeah, through the chair, I spoke with Imani on this project and he supports the project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, and it's nice to hear his name associated with, with the care.
Yeah.
So.
I, I have to.
In the relationship.
I've not met him yet.
Oh, you love him.
Okay, and on the other.
Am I supposed to say that?
That's good. Our parents who are elected officials, we have parents in the community, but they're not part of Daly City.
Right.
So they might be, you know, chief of staff for the mayor, um, of San Francisco, they're aware that we're coming before you. But I would imagine that they don't have any influence in these matters.
So that, well, now that, it just creates opportunities for him.
Okay.
Right, so I see that smile. So you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Being coaches, I know you guys have that special bond.
That's right.
It's easy to bond with him, isn't it?
Yes, he's a very nice guy.
So, yeah, so give him, he's really been searching for opportunities and I know that if, that, that's a big heart, you know, for him and what he creates. So I thank you for that. Another thank you. Labor check, Imani check. And, uh, let's see. Um, when it was, the costs were figured out of a hundred thousand per year, how was that calculated? Just off the top of my head.
Um, so I, just to say roughly, given all the time that we are foresee using the field, would come out to a thousand hours.
Okay.
A year, so times a hundred dollars, let's say, an hour to get to that hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Cause I know in the Westlake Park too, cause, um, who's gonna maintain that? We'll, we'll continue to maintain it, correct?
The Westlake Park? So, so right now, as it has been, um, it's kind of a collaborative effort between Sacred Heart Cathedral and Daly City.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's still going on?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, time goes by fast.
And no, we, we, um, we're, we're still working, we're working with the city, Daly City right now.
It's a few years, but not that many, huh? But thank you for that and I appreciate that. And, uh, and that's all I have for right this second. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both of you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to see both of you here again. And, um, I just wanted to verify a couple of things. Um, let's start off with Amani Stewart. Okay, and what I wanted to bring out was, I spoke to him approximately three months ago and after you brought the project here and I asked, what do you think? I'm glad to hear that he's, uh, definitely, uh, wanting to move forward. But something he brought up, which I think was a good idea, and it might be in the proposal, I just wanted to verify, and that is lights.
Yes. All right, I would like to take this question because there's a taste great less filling kind of tug of war behind the scenes. We're really sensitive that if the lights are prohibitive because of the, um, the neighbors or a worry about them, we're going to put in the infrastructure for the lights when the field is uprooted. But we want to make sure that the council supports it. We have the funding for it. It just is really, I, I come from a place where lights can be really, at night, can be, you know, it can present a problem.
Yeah.
So we want to be really sensitive about that, that maybe that is a separate way of approaching, you know, phase one, phase two.
Um, thank you for that because in looking at your schedules here, I see you run them till ten PM at night.
Yes.
Eight in the morning to ten PM. So, uh, obviously at, well, especially now when it gets dark.
We had a heart-to-heart about that today before the meeting. And I said, you can certainly be fully transparent, but let's not forget that we are not proposing lights at night. Thank you, Mr. Sylvester, for the question. We really have an arm wrestle about that.
Okay. I want to commend you on, uh, these graphs here. And I think it's easier to understand when you see it written down rather than just putting it in writing X amount. And by the way, I went through each one of them and I counted the numbers. And I counted the number of weeks. It comes out to 968 hours. And if we went by just the weeks, not counting the summer to which you won't be using the field, that comes out to, I got 26.8 hours on average for the week. Whereas your presentation says, it's, I know you're getting ready to answer, but hear me out. And your presentation says something to the fact that it won't be no more than...
20, sir.
20 hours per week. Okay, now, I know where you're going with this. What I did is I gave you the benefit of the doubt, because there's 52 weeks in a year. And giving back to Daly City, the months of summer, I took the average, and you were right under. It comes out to 18.61. I just want to let you know.
Thank you for that. If I may submit, please, thank you. It contradicts itself in two different documents. In the report that's a part of your agenda tonight, it says 25 hours a week. But in the MOU that is pending, hopefully, it says 20. 20 is accurate.
Thank you, doctor. So, those are the hours. What's the cost of the clinic? Now, you did say you may be able to provide some scholarships, but can you give us a flavor?
So, yeah. Okay, so I'm just going to give, and this is, because we're still, we haven't gone to press, so I want to say for a week-long camp in the summertime, nine to three, and this includes lunch. We're talking in a neighborhood of $400. Okay? So, you know, if, let's say, providing some full scholarships, or providing, you know, some type of partial scholarship, quarter, half, whatever the case may be, I think it gives those young kids an opportunity that, you know, will really be very valuable for them. And I mean, that's what we're about. We were about entrance, leave, serve. That's our motto of Sacred Heart Cathedral. And we are as multi-ethnic and diverse as you can be in this school. And I think that's reflective of all of us in terms of the faculty demonstration and how we value really trying to touch the lives of every young man and woman who come into our care.
It's in our mission statement that we must be an inclusive community. We are bound to it. If I may just add that the, every parent, no matter who they are, has to submit their financials for the school. And if somebody is blessed enough to be very privileged in the community, we meet with them personally, and we ask them to sponsor another student and help subsidize the cost of tuition, as well as the camps. It's very common expectation, and once a class is admitted, we meet with every single freshman parent, and we go through that.
Outstanding to substantiate over and above than what we see here. There's other things that happened, and I'm glad to, that you've shared that information. One last question that I have, and that is, there was talks, or I had had a talk with Mr. Stewart on the reciprocity.
Is this Mr. Stewart, the coach that you were referring to?
Right. Reciprocal agreement. And to be frank, what I'm referring to is if the park is not available to use, there was, I was thinking that there may be a possibility where he can come into Evans Park in San Francisco, or if you have anything available.
Yeah, I don't know. He could come to our place.
He could come to our practice field.
We have a small practice field, yeah.
Right, I just wanted to...
Yeah, no, no, that would, I mean, that would be, yeah, we could, that could be something that could be definitely worked out.
Excellent. Thank you. I have no further questions, Mayor.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor? Just one more.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Just one more, thank you. So it just came through my head. So at Sacred Heart, because I know you have a creed and really good, like with the value systems, what's the relationship between Sacred Heart, and as you know, we are surrounded by our Jefferson Elementary School district, some of them are very lowly funded, up in our Woodrow, our Thomas Edison, and that. So what kind of relationship, or would there be any relationship for outreach to those children?
We would welcome it. So we're actually charged with the responsibility of meeting a percent of our every-year class with people who are in dire need. The name of the program is the Piro Program, started by the Daughters of Charity, and they provide a few million dollars every year for us to identify individuals who have to be of the deepest need, below grade level, and somehow disadvantaged economically and academically. So they have a transformative opportunity to have a breakthrough in their life that otherwise someone would have to pay for.
Right, like creating the opportunities for children. And what age groups, what's the minimum age to the...
For the camps or clinics, we go, usually it's about seven or eight years old, up to 13 years old.
You have to be able to get through a day without mom and dad.
Oh, yeah. That's true. And so the clinics that you're speaking of also, and even in the summer, they would be at the March Bank?
So, yeah, so, I mean, that's our school. But, you know, if we were able to use the facilities out at March Bank to host, you know, whatever sport, you know, we want to, I think it's, I mean, we, you know, we would have to think it through, obviously, because right now, we do, we have camps down at Sacred Heart Cathedral, and we wouldn't want to dismiss those completely. But we want to see how we can integrate camps out of March Bank to add on to what we already do down at Sacred Heart Cathedral.
Because, yeah, the reason I asked that was because of the transportation issues in the low-income areas that we have with our children.
Mr. Giovanni, we, when it's in session, we provide transportation back.
Okay, great.
In some high schools, the kids seem able enough to be dismissed from the end of the program. We don't do that, because you're responsible for the child until the parent.
Correct.
But I think you're talking about the camps and the clinics, right?
Yeah, that part.
So, yeah, so, I mean, it, I think, the upside to March Bank, like I said earlier, in terms of holding camps in our clinics are twofold. One, it's going to provide Sacred Heart Cathedral with interaction with potential student athletes into the future. But more importantly, it's going to provide Daly City residents a camp or a clinic within their own backyard, so they don't have to travel very far to go to a high-quality camp and/or clinic.
Yeah, transportation's not always great going to San Francisco and all that too as well, and the time elements for parents.
Or safe.
Right. So working two or three jobs, or whatever they're doing, which I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Oh, that's good.
Okay. Do we have any in-person public comment? No?
No cards.
All right. No? Okay, so can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, I know I'm about to provide a vote on this matter, but before I do, I just want to make one final last comment. And that is, the both of you work very, very well together. A confused mind will always say no, but you provide a full and complete transparency. I understand every aspect, and you have my enthusiastically yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Rod?
Yes.
Ms. Manalo?
I just want to say, if I may, Mr. Mayor, prior to my vote, I am so happy to see this private-public partnership. As mentioned earlier, really, that field has stayed the same for quite some time. And for the communities surrounding it, the Woodrow Wilson Elementary School kids that are around it, the seniors that live around the area, I look forward to seeing this partnership come into fruition. So, yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye, good job.
Thank you.
All right, that passes. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to having a celebration at the field, inviting the community and having... Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Moving on to item number nine, which is the award-construction contract for the Community Development Block Grant. CDBG ADA Sidewalk Improvements Project. Who's presenting on this?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to turn this over to city engineer Kevin Fear for the presentation.
Okay.
Good evening. This item is the award of the construction contract for the CDBG ADA Sidewalk Improvements Project. And so tonight, the recommended actions are to approve the design documents for the project, to affirm the SEQA determination, accept all responsive bids, award a construction contract for the base bid to Golden Bay Construction in the amount of $426,654, and to authorize interim city manager to execute all the necessary contracts. By way of background, excuse me, the project includes construction of ADA-compliant concrete curb ramps, sidewalk, curb and gutter, and other improvements. It's primarily funded by CDBG funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. And Section 3 applies to this project, and Section 3 itself is a provision of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968 that's intended to ensure that employment and other economic opportunities generated by HUD financial assistance shall to the greatest extent feasible be directed to low and very low-income persons. So the base bid recommended for award tonight includes a total of about 22 curb ramps located on John Daly, Second Avenue, Third Avenue, and Hillside Boulevard. The construction bid documents themselves are prepared in part by in-house engineering staff, as well as by consultants. And that project was advertised for bids in October. Seven bids were received in early November. The lowest six bids range from about $255,000 to about $618,000, and those lowest six bids, an engineer's estimate, are summarized in the report. City staff recommends that the bids submitted by the apparent four lowest bidders and the sixth lowest bidder be deemed non-responsive due to the non-filing or incomplete filing of the required HUD forms. HUD forms with CDBG Section 3 requirements were required to be completely filled out and submitted with the bids. City staff is recommending to award to the fifth lowest bidder, Golden Bay Construction, who has completely filled out all of their required HUD forms, resulting in their total bid being deemed the lowest responsive bid. Golden Bay Construction of Hayward holds a required Class A contractor's license, which is current and in good standing. After completely evaluating the bids, staffs determine that the most cost-effective approach, excuse me, is to award the base bid only due to the amount of available CDBG funds, which is about $400,000. The low-responsive bid, base bid for this project from Golden Bay is 35% higher than the engineer's estimate. Staff found their bid reasonable based on the current construction industry and its market. If approved, as anticipated, the project would begin in February and be completed by June. For the fiscal impact, the total estimated construction cost for the project is $512,000, which includes the roughly $426,000 construction contract and an additional 20% for the contingency, inspection, and contract administration costs. These funds are available in existing project accounts, and so no additional appropriation is needed at this time. So in summary, staff recommends that the council approve the design documents for the project, affirm the SEQA determination, accept all the responsive bids, and award a construction contract for the base bid to Golden Bay Construction in the amount of $426,654, and also to authorize interim city manager to execute all the necessary contracts for the project. And we're here and available to answer any questions or provide additional information.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation this evening. My question this evening is around, how do these businesses find out about the RFP in regards to this?
So our construction, public construction projects, they're advertised through several plan rooms throughout the Bay Area. And in addition, we specifically circulate to two minority-owned, business-oriented distribution centers. And so it's also advertised in a newspaper, and then this information is found out about and then, and bid for.
Thank you. What are the two minority, I don't know, the minority outlets you talked about?
Yes, I don't, I remember one of the name off the top of my head, and it's, I believe, it's a Chamber of Commerce, and I don't recall the specific group that it's oriented towards, but it is one of the Chamber of Commerce's that focuses on minority-owned businesses.
Great, that, yeah, that'd be wonderful to know. Next time, when you, when you have, I ask this because I just, I'm wanting to know if we were able to extend it out even also towards the businesses in the city of Daly City and around the Bay Area, and just being able to reach out to minority-owned businesses. I think that was something that we were looking at as far as our process in reaching out for bids, that we do an extensive outreach in that regard, especially looking at, this is probably, or is there an opportunity in the future to support smaller businesses if they were to be, unless we're federally mandated to have only one organization? I'm just looking at ways where there's more opportunities for smaller minority-owned businesses or local business enterprises within the area to have the, have the opportunity to bid. I know it's about, about 405,000 or the estimated. So it's just, it's just an idea so that we are able to make sure we have qualified minority and local business enterprise, but then also be able to share that economic opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor Manalo. As Kevin mentioned, one of the requirements for this particular project is, because it's HUD-funded, is the Section 3 requirement that he had mentioned. And so that is a big part of contractors doing good faith effort to try to recruit workers that are, you know, disadvantaged, and so that is a big part of this, this particular project, especially since it's funded with HUD, HUD funding.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm wondering if this comes under the purview of what's before us. I've received a couple of letters, I mean, a letter, and to which the person has indicated that he has contacted and written to the council before in the past. And what he has is a no garage. However, he has a type of home that has no cutout for the curb. Now, you had made mention, this is for John Daly, but I'm thinking, moving forward in the future, is there a mechanism, does it have to go before a committee, or could this be a part of the project to handle those type of requests once it's deemed necessary and subsequently approved?
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. I am aware of that request that had come in, and we're currently in discussions. I'm also working with our planning staff in regards to those types of situations. And so that is in discussions at this moment. We haven't finalized it or come back with some formal recommendation yet, but that is in process as we speak.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that both of you do a lot of great due diligence every time over there. And I thought I saw you last night, Mr. Chu, so I want to recognize you for that. You were in the back, so wanted to say that. I did see you too, when I was talking about seeing people. But I know you do a lot of due diligence and do a lot of research, and given that it is the type of project. And you guys are really good about that. So I thank you, and proud that you work here at Daly City. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work.
Do we have any public comment? No, no public comment. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Can I get a second? Glenn Sylvester, second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. Item passes. Moving on to appointments, any board commission, membership committee appointments? Hearing none under reports, any council committee reports? Hearing none, any city council reports? Hearing none, any staff reports? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, may I, because I just recently found out, even like the last night, adjourn in memory of someone? Yes, Amani Leete... Yes, Mommy Lita Ocampo Vic, his mother, which is her son-in-law's mother, passed away suddenly. And also someone we all know, Del Shimbari, lost his wife Anne recently, a couple of weeks ago. And also like to, and we'll be getting more details from him later, but being that it's the holidays. So thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
All right, let's take just a few seconds for a moment of silence and adjourned on behalf of those two individuals. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.